Commissioners, April. Am I here?
You're there.
Should I start over? Welcome, everyone, to the Lowermoreland Township Board of Commissioners, April ninth, twenty twenty-four, advertised and stated monthly meeting. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Before we get into our agenda items, I believe the chief is here. He's on the presentation.
Yes, we're asking that.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. That was on our agenda, that's okay.
That's my boy.
Okay. Um, the Chair recognizes Joseph Canelli, Chair of the Public Safety Committee.
Yeah. Thank you, President McCurts. First item on my agenda for this evening is the ladder truck chassis prepayment. EJ and Chris have been working on financing options for the two new fire trucks, which have actually included two separate lease purchase agreements. With the ladder truck arriving in early July, this agreement will need to be done by June twenty twenty-four, while the engine financing will be finalized in twenty twenty-five. So, right now, they have a total cost of two point one million on the ladder. There's a reduction for the KME trade-in, it's fifty thousand, and a reduction number two of sixteen thousand nine thirty-seven forty-one for a chassis prepayment option. And to get this reduction, what we're planning on doing is authorizing an amount of five hundred eighty-one thousand, five hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-five cents, uh, which we have received from the Western Funds and, by the way, the prepayment of Mr. Hoffman and Ms. Lee with our budgeting process. So, going a little bit further, regardless of which bank we choose to finance this overall, we plan on putting down that one million dollars towards the purchase price in twenty twenty-four. We will then finance the balance over either seven or ten years with our payment schedule beginning in twenty twenty-five. This strategy will help avoid interest expenses on approximately fifty percent of the truck cost, while leveraging the cash blending board is done through capital contributions and the Western fee, which I already stated. Balance will then be financed to leverage the upcoming capital contributions to meet our payment schedule. Additionally, EJ will confirm that any interest potential on this five hundred eighty-one thousand five seventeen sixty-five will not exceed that presently seventeen thousand dollars in savings by prepaying. We do not anticipate that it will. Um, that pretty much summarizes everything on this prepayment. EJ, is there anything you'd like to add on this?
Um, yeah, I did look up what we would gain in interest if we weren't to pay it. It, the savings on this far exceeds the interest that we would gain on that. For six hundred fifty to a million dollar balance on the fund for the fire tax, we gained about nine thousand dollars last year in interest. So, this seventeen thousand far exceeds that. Um, so it's definitely worth it to get this sixteen nine thirty-seven forty-one, um, savings. And just to add to that a little bit more, we did get three different quotes from banks for the loan for the ladder truck. They ranged from four point seven percent to five point nine five percent. Obviously, we're leaning for the four point seven percent. So, by next meeting, we will have more, um, paperwork and documentation that we can present before you for a formal authorization to pursue a loan for the ladder.
Any other questions from the board on this?
Um, yeah, I'm not quite sure what we're recommending, as I said, there are two values that we're recommending. So, can you clarify?
Sure. What we're recommending is the five hundred eighty-one thousand five seventeen six and five, which would be for the chassis prepayment, which is basically what the truck says.
Gotcha. So, we put that down now in order to achieve the chassis prepayment?
Yes, to get the savings of the sixteen thousand and nine thirty-seven.
And those savings are greater than?
The interest that we've accrued in the fund balance of this one.
Okay. Basically, we'll get an extra seven thousand dollars out of it.
So then when we say, um, recommend, we put one million down towards the purchase price in twenty twenty-four, what is, what is that?
So.
That is towards the ladder truck itself. The two, the ladder truck, the total is two point one million dollars. So, we're putting a million dollars down. Um, the five eighty-one five seventeen, that goes towards the chassis, which is part of, I don't think we're actually gonna see the savings until the next year, right, Mark?
Yes.
Sorry, Mark was a little bit more involved with the, uh, negotiating of the price itself. But we put the five eighty-one down, we put the remainder down in cash, and then we are going to be financing the one point one million balance by June in order to purchase the ladder.
Okay. Okay, so, yeah, so it's the five eighty-one right now. That's, that's what we need, and we need to move on this timetable to take advantage of that.
Yes.
The one million is, is what effectively remains for us to, to put down?
It's the balancing cash, and then we're gonna finance the one point one with the bank, and we have to have that in place by June, because the truck, we're delivering, so.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
And, and this, um, sorry, I did, I had another question, just so I can understand, where does this money come from? They said, this is, I, I was a part of it, I watched the budget process last year, but I wasn't involved.
So, it's come from multiple different funding sources, the fire tax, the Western money that we got, the building of that project, I believe that was seven fifty.
Yeah.
EJ, who balances from the fire.
Gotcha.
Any other questions from the board on this? Anything from the public on this? No, with no questions from the board of public, anybody online? I'm gonna take another, I go. So, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the pre-chassis payment of, the payment for the chassis of five hundred eighty-one thousand, five seventeen sixty-five.
The motion's been moved and seconded to approve the ladder truck chassis prepayment in the amount of five hundred eighty-one thousand, five hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-five cents. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, that takes me to my next item on my agenda, which is the Huntington Valley Library Board of appointments. Uh, Denise and I had interviews with numerous candidates who were all incredible. There is a current vacancy on the Huntington Valley Library Board of Trustees. There are five laws that allow us to allocate two board appointments to be made by the Commissioners. Currently, only one possession is being filled, and that's by myself. The direction we received was for vacancies to be done via committee format, which we did the interviews on over the last several weeks. Uh, the library had received letters of interest from three candidates, that is who we interviewed. The recommended candidate is Avery Downs of sixteen oh eight Copper Beach Road. The other candidate, Bridgette Donato, uh, is gonna be serving as an advisory capacity if she so chooses. Is there any questions on this? Anything from the board of public? No? I'd like to, a motion to approve resolution number twenty-four twenty-six, twenty eighty, AV Downs to the Huntington Valley Library Board of Trustees, commencing April tenth, twenty twenty-four, and ending April ninth, twenty twenty-seven.
Second. Motion's been moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty-four dash twenty-six, approving AV Downs to the Huntington Valley Library Board of Trustees, as described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Thank you, Commissioners.
Right. First up, next up on my agenda is the Public Safety Reports, Chief Schermer.
I used to be in first on the agenda, but now, so. Thank you, welcome everyone to our meeting this month. Uh, over the month of March, we had, uh, a few disturbances, but most notably, we had two very serious crimes that occurred. Our officers did an outstanding job responding to them. Uh, one was a very serious tragedy of a murder-suicide at Carson Ferris. And we also handled an arson arrest where someone tried to burn someone's house down on Pine Road. Uh, that now was caught, and we're still, we found leads on that second case. Um, we had one residential forced entry burglary last month, seven DUIs, several drug law violations, uh, warrant arrests out of Philadelphia and Camden of people passing through our community. And kind of our normal fare of fraud cases, so we remind people, be careful what information you give out online, PayPal frauds were, uh, several of them last month. Um, and some disorderly conduct cases. Couple department updates, uh, January eleventh, a business owner reported a former employee, uh, refused to return a company vehicle. There was a investigation, the subject was, uh, arrested, dealing over two thousand dollars worth of tools, and a warrant was issued. Uh, we had the pleasure of participating in Read Across America at Pine Road School, where we read, uh, school, uh, stories, uh, from Dr. Seuss to kids all through the school district, it was great. Uh, Officer Samuel, she spearheaded the whole thing, this is the second year we've done it, it was a lot of fun. Um, we recognize a police officer from Scranton who was shot and in rehabilitation over in Jenkentown. Uh, us and the other surrounding agencies escorted him as he went back home. Uh, we also, uh, wanted to recognize International Women's Day for all of our female officers, including Sergeant Julia Huttig, Officer Jamie Sandals, Officer Sierra Neal, Officer Kelly Heiss, and Detective Morgan Calzian. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Chief, I just wanted to say, I'm sure everyone agrees that we're sorry your crew and EMTs had to see what they saw down at Huntington Place.
Yeah.
And I hope that if they feel the need, they will come and get it.
Yeah, of course, we have a whole series of protocols that we, uh, enacted after that to make sure everyone has, uh, services and response, and our chaplain program was outstanding, assisted throughout the whole process, dealing with the family. Uh, and we've done a briefing and SISM team, so a lot of good things happening, so it was good.
Thank you.
All right, have you heard about the children at all?
Uh, no, they haven't had any further follow-ups, the county detectives handled that case.
Yeah.
So, we know they're with family, safe and sound.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Next on my agenda would be Chief Schellinger.
Good evening, we don't have a great tonight, so. Tom, uh, my report was submitted, it's a joint report between the Brennathen and Lowermoreland Township, as I do each month. A little there, a number of bullet points, uh, just to highlight a couple of those areas. We spent a great deal of time on the agenda that's coming up later tonight, uh, working with the inter-agency agreement between the two communities and the two, uh, emergency services groups. We've also spent a lot of time on the finishing up the, uh, process of the ladder truck purchase, there's been a lot of work that had to be done in the last month. Hopefully, we'll have that wrapped up in the very near future with that prepayment, and then I believe the truck is actually online as we speak. Uh, we conducted a meeting with the Emergency Services Committee, and we met with the Chief and President of the Fire Companies to discuss the agreement that's gonna be talked about tonight. There were a number of items that were asked to be added into it, which were put into it, and we'll talk a little bit about that later if necessary. Uh, some fire calls of interest on three eight twenty-four. Uh, we responded to a building fire down at twenty-five fifty Huntington Pike, that would be the Blue Hair Salon down here. Came in as a fire alarm, but actually had, they discovered a fire on the third floor of the building when they got there, involving some machinery. Um, three ten twenty-four. Eleven sixty-six Wheeler Road for a kitchen fire, there was a small, uh, under counter hot water, it's a hot water heater that was running up inside. Took a little bit of time for the fire department's, um, investigation to locate that, it was concealed, but they did a great job, got that under control, went out of the way, and made the place safe. Well, three thirteen twenty-four, both the Brennathen Fire Company and Huntington Valley provided mutual aid to the Rockledge Fire Department on the serious dwelling fire that they had. At the same time, we had the funeral for the Philadelphia Fire Chief coming through town, so it was a little bit challenging with the resources that were available. On, uh, three twenty-three twenty-four, in both communities, where a number of water rescues are conducted by both the Huntington Valley Fire Company and the Brennathen Fire Company, they did a great job. Just to caution the whole residents, if you see a sign that says, "Stop, do not enter, road closed", please abide by that, we don't want to come meet you in the middle of the water that is rushing and dangerous, not only to you, but our people as well. And I can tell you that if that is the case, and you went through a traffic, uh, control device, you're gonna get to meet Chief Dave here, and, uh, he's not gonna be a happy person, I can assume. Uh, since that time, that was up to the time of our report, but since then, we assisted Abington Township on a dwelling fire, and we had a very serious, uh, vehicle identification up on County Line Road. Uh, it actually started in Uppermoreland Township, and the end result ended up in Lowermoreland and Upper Southampton Township. Both crews did a phenomenal job excercating, I think there was three or four out of one of the vehicles. And then we had another vehicle that actually was on fire at the same time, so. Great job by everybody, just real quick, uh, it's called statistics, fire company, emergency medical calls in Brennathen were six, in the Lowermoreland were seventy-eight. Uh, other calls, twenty-six, for a total of four hundred and twelve year to date. That puts us on track for over two thousand calls for the year, so things have been busy on the EMS side as well. Uh, for fire calls, uh, Huntington Valley fire calls in the Lowermoreland were twenty-two at the time of this report, it's a little bit more than that now. Uh, fire calls in Brennathen were two, fire calls other three, and total year-to-date up to the date of this report was ninety-nine calls. And that concludes my report.
And if you have any questions from the board? Anything from the public? Thank you, Chief Schellinger. Chief Schaller?
Good evening. Uh, just a couple of quick things, uh, I know Mark touched on a couple of things too, uh. I assisted at Abington Township Emergency Management with the funeral procession for Battalion Chief John Garro from Philadelphia. We did the lateral arch on Huntington Pike. I want to thank Cheltenham Fire Company and Huntington Valley Department South and Daytime Crew. Um, up in the Montgomery County, as far as one of the emergency management, uh, the new warehouse and storage building is now in service, it was finally approved. So, SWAT, uh, USAR, and Hazmat are now up in the new building, but there is a, uh, cachet of smaller equipment in the Fort Washington on the east side, so, uh, we'll have enough to, we have enough now to do, uh, the east and the west side of the, of the camp. Uh, a couple of fire investigations, a couple in Springfield, I assisted with Springfield Fire Marshal. Mark did mention it was a facial steamer at Blue Hair Salon. I also want to thank Detective Rama, uh, we worked together on the arson case on Pine Road. Uh, we took some samples, and, uh, I know that case is coming up real soon. Uh, I also assisted Rockledge on the, uh, daytime house fire due to the lack of guys in the area, we were called down there to dig out the bed. Um, a couple on the UNOs. We have some completed UNOs, we also have about fifteen to twenty that are old and new, so our goal is this month and into May is to finish up the UNOs and to be, um, I'm not sure if the board understands, but the UNO is also basically a fire inspection. I'm looking for the same exact thing. So, hopefully, we get these cleaned up, and we're looking at about maybe fifteen to seventeen past UNOs and new UNOs to be completed. Speaking of UNOs, for instance, on one of them, Seventy-Eight Tomlinson, we had a new UNO, uh, which ended up being a, uh, failed, which ended up being two additional building permits, a zoning issue, and a property maintenance, so. Sometimes they're real simple, sometimes they can be a little bit time consuming. Um, also want to thank the daytime crew for helping me out on the, uh, red phone test at the high school, that's an emergency test, uh, emergency phone that's used for people trapped in the elevator in Arizona State Rescue, and also for the, uh, daytime fire drills over there. Uh, we've made, we met with, our staff met with Philon Country Club, we reviewed the new hydrants that are being, uh, put in, some past permits, and we're looking at additional, uh, construction that will be started very soon between, uh, myself, building, and Ted and Jill. And also, just wanted to pass on, uh, on March sixteenth, uh, Huntington Valley Cheltenham Fire Company, um, did a, you know, a beautiful procession for past Huntington Valley firefighter, Mike Burns. Mike passed away unfortunately in a tragic motorcycle accident, he was a member of our department for a few years. Uh, Cheltenham and Huntington Valley provided the lateral arch at cemetery, and it was a very nice, uh, very nice procedure, so.
Any questions from the board? Anything from the public? Thank you, Fire Marshal Schaller. That takes me to my liaison reports. Uh, the first one is the Civil Service Commission, we did not meet last month, and I have no report there. The second one is for the Huntington Valley Library, April seventh to thirteenth is National Library Week. The theme for National Library Week is Ready Set Library. Most ideas that are in our always online world, libraries give us a green light to something truly special. Place to connect with others, learn new skills, focus on what matters most, find your crew at your library, authors, talks, workshops, book clubs. Thank you to all the H B library workers for all they do. Uh, also want to put out a big thank you to the library for their participation with the egg hunt, I heard that was a huge success this year, and it's always a wonderful community event. Upcoming events at the library are Wednesday, April tenth at seven PM, and Internet Safety for Parents, Guardians, and Communities. Join officers from LMPV to learn about Internet safety and have best support. Our students' grades catered well. On April eighteenth at seven PM, Demis Cook will present the battle of Crooked Billit, learn about the last large skirmish of the winter campaign at the Pennsylvania militia. And finally, on Tuesday, April twenty-third at seven PM, join the adult social group to ask a financial planner. This will be a crash course on topics of investing, retirement planning, and spending slash budgeting. There will be a question and answer session after the presentation. That's all I have. Back to you, Denise.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Canelli. The next is my agenda, Chair of Internal Affairs Committee. Commissioners, its first item is review and consider minutes of March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Does anyone have any questions regarding the minutes? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the March twelfth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
So.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the March twelfth, twenty twenty-four minutes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed? Thank you, Commissioners. Next is review and consider April twenty twenty-four bill list. Does anyone have any questions regarding the bill list? Thank you, EJ.
Your summary.
Always your summary. And. No questions regarding the bill list, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the April twenty twenty-four bill list. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, the next item is review and consider intergovernmental cooperation agreement of LMPA Fire and EMS Department. Um, this is to review and consider this document, the intergovernmental cooperation agreement, uh, for a joint fire and emergency medical services department with Brennathen Borough. Uh, since this involves public safety, Joe Canelli is gonna provide the background for this tonight.
Okay.
Jim?
I just want to provide a little summary. The intergovernmental cooperation agreement is the next step in what has been a fifteen-year process of cooperative joint efforts involving Lowermoreland Township, Brennathen Borough, the Huntington Valley Fire Company, and the Brennathen Fire Company. This fifteen, this fifteen-year joint effort involves multiple studies and countless meetings with representatives of both communities and fire companies to plan and continually improve emergency services for the residents of our communities. I think we can all agree that we are privileged to be served by two amazing fire companies in our community, and that the fact that Brennathen Fire Company and Huntington Valley Fire Company support this intergovernmental agreement to continue this partnership to work together to ensure the availability of high-level emergency services, resources for our residents speaks volumes to the dedication that the two fire companies have for our community. This agreement establishes a joint fire and emergency services department for Lowermoreland Township and Brennathen Borough, where the current title of Office of Chief Emergency Service becomes the Lowermoreland Brennathen Fire and EMS Department, headed by Chief Schellinger. With the new department established, Chief Schellinger can supervise and coordinate the fire service and EMS of both Huntington Valley Fire Company and Brennathen Fire Company. However, I want to reiterate, excuse me, point out a few items that this agreement does not do. The agreement does not change Huntington Valley Fire Company and Brennathen Fire Company as they are presently constituted. The Huntington Valley, Huntington Valley Fire Company and Brennathen Fire Company are two separate entities as they are today. Does not merge or combine the two companies, we'll disagree. This agreement does not commit either municipality to new expenses that are not already listed in twenty twenty-three MOU that authorize the appointment of Chief Schellinger. This agreement also does not preclude public conversation regarding the future of emergency services. This intergovernmental agreement was presented and approved by the Brennathen Borough at their April first council meeting. And now it is before the Lowermoreland Township to consider for approval for this continued partnership. It was also presented in front of Brennathen Fire Company, which they offer us at their meeting maybe sign off on, as did Huntington Valley Fire Company last evening. Is there any questions on the board on this? Any questions from the public? Mr. McFadye, please come on.
Twenty-four seventy-two Delro, Chuck the P. Joe, you, I was at the meeting last month with Brennathen, and it was perfectly clear that they could pull out of this agreement at any time, correct?
Six months notice, yes, so they signed.
Oh, six months notice now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, you said there's no financial cost for Brennathen with the new fire trucks coming in, because they belong to Huntington Valley?
That's not what I said. What I said in that statement is the disagreement that we're discussing tonight
Right.
does not discuss any finances whatsoever.
Okay.
The only finances that have already been established was with regards to Chief Schellinger's salary at the seventy-five twenty-five.
Okay, that's a two-year contract?
The current contract, I believe it's two years, yes.
And where can we find that contract at?
Where, wherever you could, uh.
Oh, right, no, it is a first-hand matter.
John, you want to comment?
Yeah, this, this is a memorandum of understanding that was adopted in March of twenty twenty-three, it's.
Yes, right.
Yeah, you can just make the request, and it is a three-year contract, with, with six months' notice.
No, no, we're talking about Schellinger's contract.
Yes.
His is a three-year?
Yes, that's a three, yeah.
I thought it was one-on-one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misread it, it's two years.
Yeah.
It would be three, and then, okay.
So, so this, so this joint venture, Joe, is, is this leaning toward a merge of one fire department?
So.
If, if the chief finds it that way?
It's gonna allow the chief to investigate and make recommendations on what he feels is best.
And then if one fire department don't agree with it, with the other fire department, where does that leave us?
So, we'll have to come down that path even when we get to it, if it occurs, but right now, both fire companies are signing their own board, but what's going on?
With him doing
Taking over.
A study, taking over operational?
Operational control is what the MOU allows, and also gives him the rights to obtain information and make the recommendations.
So, that doesn't include financing if he takes control of the operational? That includes financing, correct?
No, operations, I mean, operations on the street, say there's a working fire, who give Chief Schellinger operational control on that scene?
So, right now, lower more than taxpayers are fu- are funding the bill for the new fire trucks along with some funds from the Western Development, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And this is a joint venture?
The trucks are separate from this MOU.
Trucks are gonna be used, either way, no matter how you look at it.
I understand, but you're mixing them too, where you shouldn't mix them.
Well, not mix them, they're gonna be used, okay, so if it's going to be a joint venture, and eventually it emerges, which has been, has been sent and read, then emerge is just that, it creates one. So, this, the cost of the financial should be split, if, if it's seventy, eighty-five, fifteen, seventy-five, twenty-five, there should be some cost reduction for the taxpayers of lower more. I understand safety is the most important part of this township and the borough, I get it, but, you know, someone told me before he left, he said, the EMS should be left at Brennathen, and the firefighter should be left at Huntington Valley. You know what? That's a true statement, because these guys have trained to be EMS as you were, okay? And you guys do an excellent job, I'll never take that away from you. But also, we have an outstanding volunteer firefighter service here in Huntington Valley. We're above average with volunteer firefighters here, we're above average. Okay, everybody says they're dwindling, we are above average. And they come and they answer the call every time that siren goes off. And if we are tending to get away from them, one day, they're not gonna answer that bell. And who's gonna be held responsible for that? So, he- here's the thing here, I don't think this was given enough time, I really don't, because the Brennathen is leaning more towards, uh, EMS and Huntington Valley are firefighters. And I think that's where we have to look at, yeah, we can, we can survive all in one building, if you want to build that beautiful building up there, I get it, but separate entities should be Brennathen as EMS, and then the Huntington Valley firefighter, they all can maintain in one building.
Chuck, I appreciate your opinion on it, ten percent, but we'll see what the chief says and what everything flushes out to bed.
Right, well, but see, my whole thing, Joe, is, and I think the question was asked too, by one of the councils, what about financing? Nobody knows the financing of this yet.
It'd still be worked out, as I stated before.
And so, so, so right now, we're just agreeing to let the chief. And so, so right now, we're just agreeing to let the chief do a study. And if Burnathen don't agree with that study, they can just walk away from it after six months, correct?
So nobody is committed to merging the fire companies at this time.
Right, I'm just saying.
So what this, all this does is provide more operational control, as I stated before, and allows any of the entities to exit with six months' notice.
And if you can't get it done in a two-year period, then what?
Chuck, this is all speculation. Let's give him a little bit of time to see what he actually comes up.
Okay, all right. We'll watch it, thank you.
No, you wouldn't.
Okay, I do want to ask a question though, just sort of going off of what Mr. McDavid just shared. Should, based on recommendations that might come, if a change were proposed in either company in some sort of merger that were to come, is that something that we would ultimately have to decide? Or would the power to make that change happen reside within this department? And I don't know if we'd have to grant that in, just to think long-term.
So that's more of a question for John Rice, but there is a separate Model One C three.
Yeah, but I understand.
That would have to form a new entity.
I understand, right. I just want to make sure because I think what the question, one of the questions being asked, and I think it's a big topic that's been a part of this discussion is a chain, like some sort of merge that might happen without, without any, without the members of the communities having a say, right? That's the concern, if there's concern here. I'm wondering what it takes to make that happen if that were the recommendation? Is this something that we would have to authorize or that's something that the department would have the ability to authorize and then carry through?
No, it's another decision that's got to come back
Okay.
to the township. I mean, this, the only financial commitment is in this March twenty twenty-three M O U, which hired the chief. And, you know, the costs were split seventy-five twenty.
Right.
And that's it. This agreement tonight gives the chief some more authority under the first-class township. I mean, both the township and the borough have some ability to manage and oversee and take that role.
Yeah.
Even though it's two nonprofit.
Sure, sure.
Now, that's another decision that it has to come back because this is a two-year, two-year agreement with six months', you know, notice, so either party could walk away. You know, six months be, and then it would roll over year to year after the initial two-year commitment. So, but now, this is not going to happen out there generically. It's got to come back to the town.
Yeah, I think, I think that's an important point to make and that's why I wanted to ask the question that, you know, because it was, it was talked about before too, like part of this authorization is to allow for us to do that deeper financial analysis and understand what the options are and what makes the most sense. And I think what, again, what I'd like to make, if there's a point to make, is that, and like I assume first to see what, if there's a path forward that allows these companies to maintain, that seems to be what everyone would like to be. And unless it is dangerous to the towns or, you know, to the boroughs, to the township to have that be, I think it would be, that's a good course of action. And I think that's what we're, we're working towards. Is trying to figure out how to make both these companies work together in the most effective way possible.
Absolutely.
Thank you for answering those questions.
Any other questions from the public? Anything online left? No? Anything else from the board? No? Denise, do you want to tell your conclusion?
I would, but I also would like to ask Chief Showmaker because I know he and I had a lot of conversations, I know you did. I wasn't at the presentation with Burnathen and thank you for showing me the slideshow presentation. I really appreciate that. And also, you know, talking me through a lot of the documents that I have reviewed way back from two thousand and eight to the present, even the last two thousand and nineteen D C E D. You know, study and analysis that was done for Lower Mullen Township, which is like five years ago at this point. Mark, would you, you know, want to highlight anything before I move on this? And I appreciate all the information and as I said to you, I wish I, you know, it's been, you know, been around, but I haven't fallen out of the dust. And I wish I dove into it even a little bit sooner, you know?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Wants to cover on the highlights, again, to the point Sean had brought up. We want to study, take an in-depth look, comprehensive look and see what makes sense with individuals, whether it's individually or together. We know from a national standpoint, none of them are dwindling in volunteers, not only at the fire service, but any type of organization. So we want to find the most cost-effective and the most efficient way to provide these services to the community. As you're aware, the Board of Commissioners has a legal obligation to provide that service, as do the Council of Burnathen Borough. So my task is now to do this in-depth study, take a look at it, provide you with some possible delivery models. It will be based on a consensus-based approach. That's how I like to work with input from both organizations, fire companies, EMS. And just to clear up, the Burnathen Fire Company EMS folks are not just EMS folks, they are cross-trained paramedic E M T fire.
I heard that at the meeting, Sean. I did hear that.
Chuck, it's on your time to come. Thank you. You can come afterwards. But the bottom line is, we want to come up with the best for both groups. And again, as was mentioned, nothing changes out of the way operations go right now. We'll stay independent of this umbrella that we're creating or that I've asked to create. And then we'll move forward and navigate towards a end result that we can present to you.
Thank you so much, Chief Showmaker. Does anyone else on the board have any questions for Chief Showmaker? Okay. First, I want to say that how much I, as well as all of us, appreciate both our companies EMS for providing over a hundred years of dedicated service to our community. I know, I believe Huntington Valley is a hundred and seventeen years and Burnathen's over a hundred years, maybe a hundred and thirteen. And we appreciate all of you. I know you are indebted gratitude. I mean, it's twenty-four seven. When the call comes in, you do go out and service us and we really appreciate it and take care of our residents in their greatest time of need. But as Chief Showmaker advised, as local government officials, we have a statutory obligation to provide fire and EMS services to our residents and community. From my understanding, this is the next step in the process and it's within our books. I, should I read the resolution? I think I should.
No.
You gave an explanation. Basically, it's a summarized explanation of what you apparently gave, so I'm going to move this to a vote at this time. It's a resolution of Lower Mullen Township, Resolution Number twenty-four dash twenty-seven, approving an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Burnathen Borough to establish a joint fire and emergency medical services department for Lower Mullen Township and Burnathen Borough in accordance with the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two seven as described.
Twenty-four twenty-two.
Twenty-four twenty-seven. Thank you. Updating the intergovernmental cooperation agreement and it's with Burnathen Borough as described. All those in favor, please signify.
Can I second?
Second.
Second.
Good second.
A second.
Okay, the motion's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution twenty-four twenty-seven, updating the intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Burnathen Borough.
Want to tell?
Call for the vote.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Okay.
Any opposed? No, thank you, Commissioners. The next item on my agenda is my, is the administration report. E J, are you going to cover anything?
I have, yeah, I just have three items to report, all great news. One, well, towards the township received notification of two grant awards. One is the multi-transportation fund grant from PennDOT for four hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-two. I don't know if any of you remember, but about a year ago, I gave a brief presentation at this meeting for sidewalk installation and connection along Byberry from Heaton Road out to Walsh. There are some existing sidewalks, there's a missing gaps and some non-A D A compliant ramps. So this project really was to make that a little bit more walkable and connected to the trail on the other side down at the tool development to connect to the penny pack, right? That makes up with another trail. Anyway, the whole total project cost was estimated at six hundred and thirty-three thousand. We received two hundred thousand from the Monaco twenty forty grant last year. We still were four hundred and thirty-three short work, so we applied for this and we got it. So the whole entire project construction will be funded by grants, which is great for the community. So thank you to the state and to the county for that. Second, we received notification from the Arlie Grant, which is the red light grant. Again, a state grant for traffic signal upgrades at Welch and Lieberman and Welch and Valley. Similar to what we did recently along some of the other intersections in township. Just to make it a little bit more updated and safety for vehicular traffic as well as pedestrians. So we received funding for that. I don't have the amount, I forgot to write that amount, but it's, do you have it? Yeah, three hundred and twenty thousand, thank you. And then third, summer rack for twenty twenty-four has started. We have thirty-one registrants so far and we're looking forward to a great summer. That is it.
Thank you. Thank you, Assistant Manager Lee. Next is the tax collectors' report. I see Jane up there, elected tax collector Jane Sale. Hi, Jane.
Thank you, Commissioner. So for collections, as of the end of March, we're at twenty-five percent collected. The, from April the first to April the fifth, we've collected over two million dollars in escrow payments. So we're, you know, creeping up on our expected goal of ninety-five percent by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Does the board have any questions for Jane Sale? No, thank you, Jane. I'll accept your report.
Thank you.
Next is my liaison report. My position is our Lower Mullen Township School Board, D E I Diversity Equity Inclusion Strategic Planning Committee in a lower Mullen Township community event. Try to keep this as brief as possible. The Lower Mullen School Board held their work session on April second. Jamie Lynch reported they are continuing to finish up items on their lunch list. He also talked about the basins due to the most recent rains, storms, unfortunately, but it still gave them an opportunity to monitor the basins and how they're working and infiltrating. So he believed that there was a problem with basin two and had a blockage, so that's being looked at and corrected and fixed. Also, they also had an issue with the roof, unfortunately. Mr. Lynch reported on that. To the school board directors and advise, you know, they investigated, found the source and fixed that leak. And again, unfortunately, due to the storms, but it was good that they were able to find it now instead of when the project was finished. Next, he reported on the highway occupancy permit with PennDOT. It's going to be for two mast arms. One's going to be at Red Lion Road in Valley Center Park and another one at Valley Center at the base of the high school driveway. It's going to provide safe crossing for the students and they described it's going to be exactly what we have, the arm on Huntington Pike at Murray Avenue. So that's what it's going to look like, an upside down L with flashing lights and the crosswalk so the kids can be safe. And he believes if all the timing goes well, the work should be able to be done over the summer and ready for the start of the school year in September. The school board also spoke at length about their budget. And next week, they have a voting meeting on April sixteenth. So they, they were advised by Mr. McWinn, his manager, that even though this is not exactly where they're at with the budget, they did a great job of, of trying to get the numbers down. They're waiting for the governor, the governor to pass his budget. They're waiting for some grants and some other moving parts. Their staff has been working diligently on trying to reduce the number. But right now, it's below the Act One index, so it's just preliminary budget. So that's what's in front of them next week. And in June, they passed their actual budget. So all information is posted on the website and again, their voting meeting is Tuesday, April sixteenth at the district. Next is Lower Mullen Township School District D E I. We haven't had a meeting, but I did, you know, I had these scheme board meetings and by Zoom. And I don't have anything to report with the adult participation. But Carla Pacetti advised she's working with the students and the staff in groups regarding the goals that were set in the committee. So our next meeting is scheduled for April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. It's the final meeting for the year. Next, on the Strategic Planning Committee, we have a monthly meeting. So we had that in March and the group worked on priorities and goals as well as language for this next five-year strategic plan for the district. It's going to be a document that is rolled out. It's a large group. It's a lot of collaboration. I actually, one sat at the table with your wife and we had, we really had a nice group and some great ideas. So then our next meeting will take place on Thursday, April eleventh. Like I said, it's monthly. So we're all looking forward to that. Next is community events. Our April township event will be Friday, April nineteenth from four thirty, six thirty at Lower Mullen Park. It's an Arbor Day slash Earth Day. We have a lot of great things planned. Thank you, Leah, for helping and guiding and us working together on this. We have tree planting, we have a park cleanup, we have a giveaway goodie bag filled with informational materials and bird, birdhouse for some of the kids. We have a few crafts. We're going to have birdhouse painting and we actually, we have soil and these little biodegradable pots with some native perennial seeds. So the kids are going to do that at two tables. Finally, we had a great group of young kids from kindergarten through fifth grade for the Martin Luther King Day, Public Works made. Bird boxes, duck boxes and bat boxes with the township, you know, with the kids. They had a great time. And we had forty kids in combination, so they'll be distributed and they're going to work with Public Works. Some of the kids live, have their homes in the park and they requested, can my birdhouse, you know, be, you know, positioned on a tree or somewhere back there? So it's going to be a combined effort. So, and Public Works is looking forward to that. So, thanks, Steve. The next is April event is the Fairy Tale Trail. That's going to be April twenty-first to twenty-seventh in Lower Mullen Park. Seventeen advisory, Ken also writes the book and it's really great at night for everyone of all ages. In May, we have a workshop. It's a journey to biodiversity, backyard biodiversity. The presenter is Katie Fisk from Briar Bush Nature Center. That'll be Wednesday, May fifteenth at the Huntington Valley Library for one hour, six thirty to seven thirty. Just for everyone's reference, the township sponsors, the Earth Day event and this workshop. So there's no cost if anyone wants to attend, but please sign up. There's, it's on Facebook and it's on our website and the information is there. Space is limited. Next in June, we have the Pine Road Elementary visiting the township from the Lower Mullen Police Department and our fall events have been planned. E J advised the open house slash fire prevention will take place on Saturday, October twelfth from, it's always eleven to two. Our trunk or treat has already been scheduled to for Saturday, October nineteenth, so we're looking forward to all these events. Next, I just wanted to highlight because Leah and I sat down with Julia Huttig from the L N P D and we want to try to make sure we promote the police department and their events because they do such an unbelievable job for us. So there's three and I'm going to go quick. The National Prescription Drug Takeback Day is April twenty-seventh, ten to two. And L N P D will be hosting it at the collection site. So if anybody has anything, bring it on over. They have a parent cyber safety presentation on Tuesday, April fifteenth and May ninth at seven P M. Going to be at the community room at the library, learn more about Internet safety and how to best support students in K three twelve with cyber bullying, online privacy, online enticement and inappropriate content. So the program's for everyone, parents, guardians, community members who are invested in online safety for children and students. So you can register for that at the Huntington Valley Library. Final is the Lower Mullen Police K nine unit fundraiser. That's going to be June twenty-second, save the date, from nine to twelve at the Lower Mullen High School, the new building, Valley Center Park Drive entrance. They're going to have a lot of great stuff, boot trucks, face painting, Balloon Orator, Raffles and more, and me, Kermit and Thor and a whole bunch of other K nine teams. That concludes my agenda items for this evening. The Chair recognizes Commissioner Mueller, Chair of the Community Development Committee.
Thank you, President Curtis. I'd like to try something a little bit different going forward, so I'm going to invite Ted Middleton up to provide the building emissions report because I think they'll do a much better job than.
We'll see.
Good evening. The code department had seventy-five permit inspections for the month. We had thirty-five permit applications. We had thirty five permit applications. We had thirty five complaints. Regarding the complaint that we had last month for the cats on the An Street. We are making good progress. On the shelters have been removed. We are working with that homeowner about not feeding the cats any longer. So we're, we're getting there on that progress. The planning commission saw a sketch plan for ninety one oh six Byberry. And applicants are scheduled to be back in front of the Board of Commissioners at the May meeting. We have eleven land development. In process, so they're all in different series of process. Jill and I hosted a CASO meeting at the Township Building. That's the Pennsylvania Association of Zoning Officials. That's the Bucks County chapter. There are some Montgomery County folks that are joining that as well. So we had that. If you haven't noticed, Jill and I met out with Seta. At the lot on Pine Road.
Looks great.
They cleaned everything up. They cut it down. They said they'll be back to take care of some of the fencing and remove some more stuff along Pine Road. Is there any questions?
The next item on on my agenda is my liaison report. As Ted mentioned, the planning commission held a meeting on March twenty eighth. It was held in the old high school. And the 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 primary, you know, agenda items during that meeting was Ted referenced. It was a sketch plan. Ninety one oh six Byberry Road. And, you know, this was not something for a vote. It was, you know, an opportunity for. The applicant to collect some feedback. You know, the the feedback seemed like there's quite a bit of engineering work that the applicant would face in order to have this project go through. But they are, they did propose twenty six townhomes. So this was the first of two sketch plan reviews. One was in front of the planning commission. The second one will likely be on our agenda. I think for for May. So we'll have an opportunity to hear more about that point in time. The next meeting of the planning commission, I believe, is on April twenty fifth of this month. And that's all for the planning commission. The the second liaison report I have is for Pennyback Ecological Restoration Trust. They had their quarterly meeting on March nineteenth. The primary agenda item there that I think is noteworthy was the June Fairgrounds. I think I previously reported that they're trying to purchase that. The deadline for purchasing that is June thirtieth and it appears that they have. Almost the funds raised between what has been pledged and what they already have. And my understanding is that they have a little bit of land acquisition fund. So if they fall short before that, they'll still be able to make the purchase. But they're strongly encouraging everybody to take a look at it, make donations because they need to replenish. They wind up using the funds from their land acquisition. They're going to need to replenish that. So. That was, they have a strong plus for that. There's a couple of other things that are happening around. The Pennyback Ecological Restoration Trust. They have some summer concerts planned. One is, I think the first one is June twenty eighth. There's going to be a press release of the land, this purchase of the June Fairground on April seventeen. So that's coming up. They are looking for new members and the next meeting, next quarterly meeting will be June eighteen. So that concludes my liaison report.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mueller. Next, the next Chair of the Council, Commissioner Halton, Chair of the Fall Product Committee.
We have two potential applicants for the history of our fixture review board. They are Terry and John Deesenzo. Their terms of person to expire on April eighteenth. And they have both expressed interest in continuing. They have not been on the board very long. I think this is only going to be their second. For your term. So I would love to see them return. Does anyone have any questions about Terry and John? I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number twenty four dash twenty seven. Reappointing Terry Blair Deesenzo to the Harv for a term commencing April nineteen, twenty twenty four. And ending April eighteen, twenty twenty eight.
Sorry. Motion's been moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty four dash twenty seven. Reappointing, reappointing Terry Deesenzo to the Harv. As described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? No opposed?
The next motion goes twenty four dash twenty eight. Reappointing Dr. John Deesenzo. To the Harv for a term commencing April nineteen, twenty twenty four and ending April eighteen, twenty twenty. Does anyone have any questions?
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number twenty four dash twenty eight. Reporting Dr. John. Deesenzo to the Harv. As described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Commissioners.
President Curtis, I just, can we just check the resolution numbers? Because I think twenty four dash twenty seven is.
Was that, was that for the governmental agreement? I just, okay. So what do we have to do to redo that? Give them on what is?
Just just correct it.
Just make that first one twenty four dash twenty nineteen. Terry, go down to twenty four dash twenty nine.
No, twenty eight.
Forty eight is sorry.
We already, that way we have to change and vote.
We have to read, change, redo the motions?
Do a motion and correct the resolution numbers.
You want to make the motion? Okay, make a motion to correct. The two resolutions, one reappointing Terry Deesenzo to the Harv. That will be resolution twenty four twenty eight. And can I combine them?
Sure.
And. Resolution number twenty four dash twenty nine of reappointing Dr. John, John Deesenzo. To the Harv as previously described. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners.
We also had the. Township Authority meeting this this month. You know, it's a quarterly meeting and basically we discussed. That the projects are ongoing and. We actually have, because of the mostly the art funds, which were. Federal funding, we will be able to start replacements. Of some of our sites, the smaller sites, so that we can keep up. One of the most important things we do in this town, if you may not know it, is to process the sewers. But without it, our township would cease to exist. So. We're trying to keep up and these these buildings were put in many, many years ago. You can see the sewer department report. If you guys want me to reach you the average monthly flows or anything. For Bethany Station, the average monthly flow was forty one point eight million gallons. For Chapel Hill, we had a fair amount of effluent. But then. And we had influence. So effluent means that's for rain and heat. Okay, our process is to try to keep the rain out of the sewer dirt. But sometimes it's impossible when you have rains like we've had lately. So the rain affluents were five point five million and the effluent flows were six point eight million. Then there comes the stations, those smaller plants I was talking to you about. There's Dale, Eli, Hollowell. Huntington, Jefferson, Longview, Salbrook, Woodlot, Stone Mill and Woodmont. They're all different ages. The three oldest are scheduled to be. Either replaced or just.
They're going to be totally replaced.
So replace, that's what I thought. Hopefully in the next few months, ordering the pieces and the 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 equipment that's needed takes many, many. Months of lead time. So we'll, we'll keep working on that and that's in the township authority. Does anyone have any questions? Do you want to add anything, Steve? Sorry, I can't make my words.
I actually have a question. Jason Beato, living on Washington Lane. And just talking about sewer, which is. So my basic question is, there's no sewers on that road at all. I know it's one of the older roads. It's been here. You cobble stuff up. And had a lot of problems with stormwater runoff. Stormwater and runoff over the years, to the point where some neighbors on Grasshopper Lane cut down. Three, four acres of trees. All that water is going in my backyard. And I've brought this up a couple of times before. Is there any opportunity or chance that? Washington Lane is going to be addressed on how stormwater is being handled because it all goes down the Pennyback.
Yeah. When the trees were cut down, we were not advised in advance and should have been. Because of the number of trees. So they were supposedly fined by the county. Is that correct?
Well, they they did have some violations with the county. That is correct. As far as their N P D was permitted was concerned. It sounds to me like that question's a little broader than just Grasshopper.
Well, it's it's a little broader too, because you've been giving variances to different houses on Grasshopper as well as Washington Lane. Which creates more of an permanent surface as well. And it's for no regard to having nor stormwater control in that area. And that's the problem. And also the variance that was given to that house on Grasshopper that cut down all those trees. There's been no mitigation put up yet. He told you that that other half of this property was going to be for his brother, but lo and behold, it's up for sale. I can go into several different things. I've been before this board a couple of years ago. That certain comments were made to the board, which I knew were lies at the time. But the board still approved certain things. So that's my concern, is that a lot of these things are just kind of being brushed aside. Don't care what the consequences are. For the residents on that street.
Thankfully, that second lot does fall into the jurisdiction of the D and P. He's disturbing more than one acre. So he's got to come up with a bit of robust stormwater management plan if he intends to build on that second.
Well, it's been a while now and nothing's been done to mitigate it. And my pool's now a muddy brown. And it gets open because of when we have all these rains. In addition to that, between my property and the property behind me that faces on Paper Mill, you start to see a lot of erosion. You can actually see some of my trees where I planted thirty trees on the fence line to try to mitigate it. I'm also having other trees that are inside my property that you can actually start to see the root systems now.
You know, I've not been able to visit your property yet. It might be helpful if I stop that to say hello one day and just see what's going on.
And I probably have a picture somewhere still where you saw the water coming off the edge of our wall like a waterfall. Probably forty gallons a minute, if not more.
Jason, could you make sure that you state your address? I don't think you did it. Your S name, so our assistant has it. And basically, you know.
Okay.
Your phone number.
Sounds good.
We can reach you.
Two two five six Washington. Last name's Beato. Beasen Boyl, B A T O.
And I'm wondering, I guess maybe can we look at? You know, when we have a situation like this where, you know, somebody has done something outside of the. Outside of the normal procedural process and now it creates another problem. And, you know, I think there's an opportunity to resolve it if it's sold. Because if they were going to build one up, we could then make the mitigating steps to be able to correct it at that point, fine, but. You know, if it stays up for sale for, you know, it's already been up for sale a while. It's already causing damage in other areas. I guess, you know. Perhaps you can, when you take a look at it, you can make a report back to the board on what steps might be.
And not to interrupt, but this is not the first instance that's happened. My immediate next door neighbor. New owner now, but the previous owner tried to do the same thing. Caught him in several lies as far as what they presented to the board. Thankfully, they couldn't control hardship at that time. But I had a challenge. It took maybe three meetings to get it resolved. And it's been, it's been a headache because you'd have people coming in, they're making statements to the board. And then they turn around and do the exact opposite. So that gets frustrating as well. And then you have no control or no recourse after that happens.
Tim, we, I remember when that. Property owner was in front of us for the main house, you know, Grasshopper. We had asked them to plant. Certain trees for that house. Also, can we pull the plans? Maybe we can take. And make sure that they planned it all that they were going to.
Lot one, they comply. We did that before. Right. Like we recall, that was a two lot subdivision.
Yeah, sure.
The second lot is yet to be developed.
Exactly.
We are in the process of reviewing the plans for that second lot now. They are actually out at. County Conservation District for that N P D as permit. So I had a pretty lengthy review for that engineer and for that applicant. We met on site. We did walk that kind of drainage pattern from from lot two. It would be helpful to see it from your side.
Yeah, absolutely.
As well, just to make sure we we get those in just.
It it's a little deceiving the way where you sit, but the way the land lies, it comes straight through the back of the property.
You're at the bottom of the hill there.
I'm in the middle of the road. So it's not the bottom by the Pennyback or the tributary going to the Pennyback.
But you're on the path of.
I'm on the path, which is I'm probably three houses down from Grasshopper.
I'm sorry, say it between wealth, from wealth, it's our wood. You're in the middle there.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, Phil, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure.
And that's a good dump.
Thank you so much.
Podium.
I'm your favorite resident for Grasshopper. I figured I got to do something.
Could you come to the podium and then just say your name and address?
I'm here to give everybody a laugh because you know I won't be around too much longer. And it's a good thing. It's the way the world is going. I think I'm lucky. I guess I've been in the township fifty years. First person we met. This Septic went. Pigmentally came out, did that years ago. Every, I don't even know who he is. Everything in this township is some of a handshake. Handshake. You try to find out where it's written. It's not written anyplace. When he brought up about the water, I spent over fifteen grand. When my new neighbors on both sides moved in and things were done. Of course, I'm there. What do I know? I don't know anything about this kind of stuff. So I got it fixed. Last, last Tuesday when we had that rainstorm, I was so mad. If I wouldn't have been on my way to pick up. My grandson from after school, I would have been over at Public Works. Because I was so pissed off. I have this. I have two gullies at the end of my driveway. And they're supposed to water from elbow. Comes down and down because I have a culvert and those three feet off of Grasshopper. It's not my property. It's your property. I bet I said the buck stops with me when I fix that crap. Now I think the buck stops with you guys to take the responsibility. And get the water that comes down from elbow. I don't care that it comes through my culvert. It gets to the first thing, goes under my driveway to the next thing, but there's so much of it. That overflows out onto the thing because I was told at one time. When it gets to this side of the driveway. The the thing, the pipe is like this. But then going towards House Beautiful, it's like this. How's that much water going to get down there? I'm not a scientist or anything. But I know that you're not going to put this much, this much, not have any crap happen. Can you want to have that look at?
Give us your name and address, please.
Well, I call myself to finish grass.
Yeah, if you're not.
Hundred Grasshopper Road. Been in the township probably. But the other thing I wanted to, just for my own knowledge, because I think I'm one of the township that goes by the rules. My grandma sent to me, mean, don't you know you have to go by the rules? I said, oh, you got that wrong. I said, the way everybody does it, they don't go by the rules. With the thing to yard waste. Yard waste is stopped sometimes in sometime in January. Doesn't start up again to April. I called, I had my yard waste in the branch. Put it out April third. In January and February, February, the end of January, February and March. People put their yard waste down. The trashmen pick it up. Aren't the trashmen picks? Given the notice, they don't pick up yard waste. But they picked it up. The other thing, but then today, and I did, I took pictures. I went out on Friday, Thursday. People had yard waste down. Thank God, they didn't pick it up on Friday because they're not supposed to. They didn't pick it up today because I checked that out too. They didn't pick it up today because I checked that out too. So tomorrow they'll pick up their yard waste. Why is, doesn't anybody follow up on what you're supposed to do or does the trash man know? Don't you tell them?
Didn't we have a contract with the trash?
What was that? Did you check what they did?
Ma'am, we, Miss, they did start a little earlier this year. So on Wednesdays in March.
This, the last week.
No, they didn't.
The last week they started, the last week in March. But they should not pick it up.
About this big monies that's going on around.
They should not pick it up if it's, if it's.
And then a very big break since I've been on my over here is two day trash collection. I was told it's cheaper to have it come around two days. Again, I'm not a scientist. And I don't think it costs less to have those trucks run around twice. A week than having one once at Abington, a bigger township. They only have one day, we, trash collection. If you recycle correctly and we have big cans for recycling. You don't need two days trash collection.
We appreciate that comment. We.
But we still have a contract for another few years. And then once that's over, I'm pretty sure we'll be down to one ten. So, um, you have two more years under the current contract and we can.
And then the other thing I heard, now I don't know if Little Hornet does this. Somebody told me up in Warminster, you're over sixty-two, you get a three percent reduction on your real estate taxes. Is that fact or fiction?
I don't know about.
That's what I thought. I said I, yeah, so, all right, that's all I have. I mean, I said I always pay early so I don't get a group, so I gotta go over to CJ on Thursday.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your comments. Okay.
That completes my report.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Allison. Next, the chair recognizes Commissioner Blatton, Chair of the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you. So first on my, uh, agenda is to review the zoning hearing board agenda and decisions. So first, for, uh, the upcoming, uh, April agenda, uh, which will take place on April eighteen, Thursday, April eighteen. Uh, there are five applications, uh, on the April's agenda. The first is application number twenty-four dash zero seven. Uh, this is an application of the Penny Pack Ecological Restoration Trust. They're seeking a variance to allow two signs where one is permitted. Each twenty-four square foot or four square feet is allowed on two separate open space parcels on the rural earth. Application number twenty-four dash zero eight, excuse me. This is the application of Lucas Long of eleven sixty-three Deloitte Circle. They're seeking a variance to allow the reduction of the year rear yard setback from twenty-five feet to eleven feet for a nine hundred square foot condition. The third application, number twenty-four dash zero nine, this is the application of Kalin Cosma and Roxana Cosma. Of thirty-five, thirty-four Hill Road. They're seeking a variance to allow six foot high privacy fence in their front yard. Where four feet and fifty percent open is permitted. Fourth application, twenty-four dash year, dash ten, excuse me, the application of Christopher Roentree of fifteen twenty-five Nicholas Lane. Seeks a variance to allow five foot high fence in the front yard where four feet is permitted. Also looking to allow two hundred twenty-four square foot accessory structure in the front yard. And finally, application number twenty-four dash eleven, this is the application of Ming Won Zhang of thirty-seven, thirty-six Pine Road. They're seeking a variance to allow in-law suite greater than seven hundred square feet to be served by a separate driveway. Uh, those will all be heard, uh, in the coming April meeting. Uh, there were three decisions that were made in the March meeting, uh, the first application twenty-four dash before. This application of Virginia Ryan Oberberger. They saw variances to reduce their front yard setback from forty feet to sixteen feet and expand the nine forty building to sixty-eight percent. Application number twenty-four dash zero five, uh, the application of Roman Murray of thirty-four ten Paper Mill Road. They thought variances to permit increased lock coverage from twenty-five percent to thirty-three point eight percent and a six foot high front yard fence. And finally, application twenty-four dash zero six, the application of Michael Verardi. Who saw variances to reduce the side yard setback from twenty feet to twelve feet. To reduce the rear yard back from twenty-five to twenty-two feet and to allow accessory structure height of twenty-two feet where fifteen is permitted. All of these variances were granted. That's it for the, uh, zoning hearing board agenda and applications. Um, I, I wanted to add that, uh, this month, uh, we, uh, were looking for. Uh, applicants to, uh, sit on this zoning hearing board as alternates. Uh, we like to have alternates, uh, for the, for the board as we do with other, uh, committees to make sure that we always have a full seat, um, should we need someone there. Uh, we interviewed five amazing candidates, uh, all bringing really great experience, uh, and a really great attitude to the, to the need that we had. Um, and we have chosen two and we'll be talking about them in our next meeting to, uh, to sort them in.
Sean, go back to yours. Are you open to other questions for us?
Oh, excuse me, yes. Any questions, um, about zoning hearing board agenda and past applications?
Twenty-four eleven, I'm reviewing that right now, which is the application by Ming Won Zhang, I believe, thirty-seven, thirty-six Pine Road.
That's right.
It's calling for a second suite over seven hundred square foot for an in-law. Plus the driveway. I pulled the arrow on this and took a look. There's already four in the large driveway in place on that one. I'm in opposition to that second driveway at a bare minimum. And leaving it to the discretion of the zoning hearing board on the. In-law suite for going over seven hundred, but with the allowing of impurposed coverage. It's going to be long in excess and I'd like to say it in a letter against the approval of the driveway now at a bare minimum.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree too.
Thank you, James.
All right, uh, well, that in mind, um, suppose a motion is ordered. Um, so, uh, I'd like to pose a motion to, um, allow for Solicitor Rice to offer a letter to the zoning hearing board. Um, in opposition of application twenty-four dash eleven.
Specifically the driveway.
Specifically in, in regards to the second driveway where no driveway is allowed.
In-law suite over seven hundred.
The property already has a triple driveway with parking stops as if you pull in with like a wah-wah. So there's something's. Already.
It needs to be a janitor's office that was run out of them.
There a second for this?
It says. The in-law suite over seven hundred square feet. Is it eight hundred, nine hundred, twelve hundred?
He didn't even provide that information to us.
So.
I mean, that's, that's another.
Yeah, can we modify this to one way to an in-law suite of seven hundred square feet and any of that second driveway? Do you guys give a thought?
So our, our letter.
Without any permits.
So this is what's on the map, right? Not, not in addition to.
Is the driveway in place already too?
They did everything, got caught doing it and they had to go for building permits. And because they had the issue with the zoning, they decided to go to zoning hearing board first. You gotta be approval and then come in for building permits.
So in, in law suite is where the dentist office used to be.
We did talk about fines for, you know. Pool breakers, so to speak. Is there anything, uh, you know, do? We talked to them and they complied. They had to get plans and they did all of that.
What did the plan show for square footage? Because this just says over seven hundred.
Right, so the plan showed the whole layout. They didn't specifically mark where the in-law suite is. There's a little bit of a, a language barrier. So we helped them as much as we could and. We just figured the zoning hearing board would probably just talk to them about it and see if they could get more information.
Where's the second driveway?
By the basketball court.
Yeah, they added it to the left.
Back on the same side where the pool would be?
Correct.
So what kind of a deal is it to have them tear it down, the second track?
What, what I would suggest you do, stay with the motion. Oppose it across the board because the zoning hearing board doesn't hear from you. They may just approve it. It's already built. I mean, that's a different, it's a different issue.
Yeah. Yeah.
If they don't get the variance and you, you know, that's something the board can talk about.
Yeah.
What the, the next step would be if you want to take that next. But it sounds like, um.
You don't get the variance that we have to.
I mean, the other, the other thing with in-law suites is there's a requirement now in the code that there be a. A restrictive covenant filed against the in-law suite. So it stays in in-law suite and it doesn't become an apartment.
Which we would do through the building process if everything got approved during the permits, we would send that to your office to get all of that.
But I think just for, because I, my rec, yeah, just motion to oppose the application and then.
So, uh, let me, I'll just, I'll say to make sure that it's sufficient. So I'll, I'll amend my original motion. Uh, like the motion to, uh, allow for Solicitor Rice to author a letter on behalf of the lower one board of commissioners. Uh, in opposition of application twenty-four dash eleven.
Second.
Motion was moved and seconded to authorize Solicitor Rice to send a letter in opposition. Of application twenty-four dash eleven. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any, no, yes, sorry. And just to wrap it up, I, I really wanna, I'll, I'll check it out. Lee, AJ, and I'll look into it tomorrow about the possible fine. You know, I know we put something in the code way back about people that started work and whatnot. Uh, they go through with the building permits, all that, all of that. Okay. But now we have to, if they don't get the variance, then we have to work on how we're going to make it comply. So that's gonna take some time.
Double permits all cost twenty-four thousand and it costs a per kid for a school district. Let's just be honest. They're not, it's not in law suite. They already have an in-law suite and I have a second in law suite. Crazy.
Really?
Uh, well, that concludes my report on zoning hearing board. Um, uh, my other liaison position is for the building code board appeals. Which did not meet and so I do not have a report for them and.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Blatton. The next chair recognizes Commissioner Page, Chair of the Public Works Committee, Joe.
Putting in a second driveway.
Because eighteen spots were ten months.
By tomorrow, Public Works handed over to Steve.
Okay, a couple of things. Uh, curb side yard waste. We're starting this block a little bit more now, so.
What? No, just.
Um, with our bid approval, you guys have proven that paving bid, we'll go to our prep work this week. We have that eat handicap ranch will do. Uh, we don't treat that curb, we gotta fix some and, uh. I think we have about six or seven handouts will leave though. Um, our people actually want to start the end of this month, but I think that's a little quick for us, so. We're getting a, a new schedule on that. I did tell them they can come in and do VAC roads since that's done, so hopefully that'll be done sooner rather than later. I have a meeting, I'm sure my notes from my country club, they're gonna do a nighttime detour. So that'll happen in May. As you know, Woodrow knows about it. Uh, it might be a little rough for a week or so, but it'll be the best way to get it done quick and it's Pango's call on there.
So they're gonna be working over and.
Yes.
And, and Steve, I know you have a great relationship with the schools, so you know that.
Yep, I already talked to, uh, Mark the wind, letting them know, it, it'll, it's gonna be a night which helps out now. But sometimes I'll have, I'll have a little bit of worry.
You know roughly, um, what's, what are the hours from when to when?
Seven PM or six PM to five AM, six PM. I think they're doing about twelve back. They're giving back twelve hours. They're giving them extra time. They're giving them the whole weekend to, so they can have a full seven days to get it done. Originally, they wanted two weeks.
I will make a post on the website, you know, on the best of, so we can get it out to them.
Um, last week with the rains, we're up getting the fields ready for HVA. But, uh, they had opening day Saturday to go to Monday. We finished the fields this week, uh, actually today, so they're off and running. Uh, HVA took a permit out for the, the gym. They, they usually are not in the gym this time of year, but they're trying to expand their basketball program. Uh, be a little more competitive with the, the other organizations they play. So they're gonna be in the gym, um. April, May, and then they have some June tryouts. So the, the gym will be busy. Kids will be busy, so not too bad.
And will it be open for the, the summer, it'll be open?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the gym's gonna remain open. There's a ton of people still play pickleball in the morning, uh, HVA, I was gonna use it now. And there's people that play pickleball in the night.
So I know that's that, you know, the, the men's basketball league.
Sunday, they still have their permit. That runs through June.
Okay. Um, thanks, Steve.
How much salt do we have left?
We have about nine hundred tons. So we, 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 salt we use, we replenished and we're good to go for next year.
And now the price could go down.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Uh, the A's opposition is HVA. As, as Steve said, HVA pulled, I'll just elaborate a little bit. They pulled another permit because. Surrounding basketball clubs, they get, their players play all year, so they're trying to be more competitive with the local clubs. So they're offering spring sessions for basketball. Holding tryouts four months earlier in June, they'll select their team and then them new teams can. Do summer leagues, fall leagues, and then that will get them right into the actual season start in January. Uh, as Steve said, opening day parade was Saturday for baseball. Uh, five hundred thousand people, it was. Fire department's there, police partners there protecting everybody, blocking the streets off. It was a good turnout. Um, spring soccer's still going. Tryouts are this month for soccer. And, um. That's all they have to go right now, HVA. That's, that completes my agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Pace. That concludes our agenda items for this evening. Now we'll have public participation on non-agenda items with everyone, with anyone in the room, like addressable, okay, Lauren. Please go, we still have to, I mean, take, we need them to just put a record.
Hi, Laura, Caltheam, three, two, three, one, Maple Road. I, I just have a couple of comments. Um, our water, our rain, it's not going to get, we're not going to get less rain. But the, the, what we're seeing now is going to continue to progress. I'm curious and maybe, maybe Jake or me might be the person to ask. If you drive through Evermoreland over the last year or so, they've installed these arms. I'm assuming they got them, I think I heard that they got them through grants. Is there a possibility? That we could implement that for, unless we just love to have busy work during rainstorms. Uh, uh, they just seem like, uh, the next step of what we can do to control people from. Going through. Waterlogged intersections. Is that something that we can apply for?
Yeah, the, actually, we just had this conversation with our staff just a couple of weeks ago. About that exactly, and we are looking into all of that. We recognize the need for that in this community, so. Um, yeah, we're looking at first pricing, locations and funding opportunities, all of that.
Okay. I think Evermoreland got grants for theirs, so they might be a resource.
Right, we definitely can reach out to them and see.
Okay, um, it, it just, I don't know why we haven't. Dealt with this already, um. Somebody said something about acquisition and it made me think about this, um, and, and ask it in a more clear way. Do we, uh, does the township have a fund to acquire? Land specifically, to preserve land, acquire land. To, whether it's to preserve open land or buy property that, um. We could otherwise utilize or simply keep empty.
Years ago, it was on the ballot to raise the income tax from one percent.
I, I know that, I know that, that first. It was, it was a long time ago with a different population. Um, we have a new population in Evermoreland since that, uh, whatever we call that, what was it? A ballot measure. Since that ballot measure, I think that was. Eight, ten years. It was a long time ago and our population has changed and I, my feeling is that the younger folks. Um, who have moved into the township might be more, um.
Are you suggesting we put it back on the ballot?
I, I am, in, in language that is clear and not, uh, purposefully deceiving. So that people understand what it is and what is being asked.
That we have, Laura, we, we have been talking to Solicitor Rice on and off about this. And it, remember the referendum. And it, remember the referendum, we had to preserve open space or purchase. Can you, and the language, we had to submit it and have it be a certain way, only so long, so many.
We don't mean, yeah, we don't, oh, I'm asking, do we have a fund? Aside from asking taxpayers to ask for it, and I'm not opposed to, if, if that, if there's a reason to raise taxes. I would rather raise taxes to preserve some land and protect it from being developed. And maybe utilize it for the growing township, um, you know, mini parks, something, I don't, I, I don't care. I, I'm asking if we have a fund. In a part of our current taxes.
We do not have an open, open space acquisition fund.
Okay, that was my question, thanks, AJ. Um, and is that something that the board would consider? Um, I'm just, I'm asking, I'm not asking for answer right now. Thank you, yeah.
Moving forward in the future.
Yeah, um, thank you. It's, it's, I just want for the record that there are people out here and. A lot of people call me, I don't know if they think I'm a commissioner, I don't know what it is, but people call me and. I literally got a call from the other day because of a committee person, which is a volunteer position. From a woman who had a problem with hurts, and lovely woman with her grandson and a, and a college credit problem. And I, I was so caught off guard, I just, I, I didn't know how to respond, but anyways, I get weird phone calls. Um, it wasn't that, but it was something that as a volunteer person in the neighborhood on.
Anything else?
Um, yes, um. We seem to act very quickly about some, some things, like the pickleball thing came up, the noise, we spent money to buffer the court. Then we spent money to make new courts, then we allowed them to go into the gym. So that got handled, and then we have a gentleman here who's had an ongoing water problem. And I get it that there's a neighboring property, yada, yada. I just feel like. If the gentleman didn't come here tonight, how long would he be suffering? I, but I, um, I don't know how to solve the communication problems between residents and, um, the township. I appreciate that Joe Cannelli noticed something in the zoning, the upcoming zoning. I don't know if that's in your ward and you're aware of it. I appreciate that. I hope all the commissioners are looking at these. Um, zoning requests because of impervious surface. They all get approved many times and we are just. Concrete and up our land around here, so, um, and I also don't understand how all that work got done without anybody noticing. Um, again, just a comment, but in terms of all that. I one hundred percent understand why Mr. Showmaker was hired. I one hundred percent understand the role that he's playing. Sounds to me like the idea of what are we gonna do in ten years? You know, eight years, whatever. At some point, we have to figure out something. I understand it, I appreciate it. Sounds like it would be a really hard thing to get two chiefs from two different companies to come together and figure out how to make that work. My understanding years ago was that, that that position was meant to be a consultant. Somehow it turned into a full-time, um, position. Maybe I heard wrong, but I've been listening for years. In my mind, it was consultant, fine. It's not, it's a full-time position, benefits, truck, yada, yada. Um, and I understand and I hear that he has operational control. At the sites when a fire is occurring, when an emergency is occurring, is that what you're explaining?
That is, and I'm just gonna clarify, his position was never hired as a consultant position.
I know.
Consultant fine in his position. He was always intended.
Okay, okay, I appreciate it. So I understand he has operational control at the emergency site, is that what I'm hearing?
So once the fire companies ascend to this agreement and sign all the township in the borough, it will give him operational control, yes.
At the site of an emergency?
Yes.
Okay, because I was at the BA meeting and when they use the term operational control, I understood that to be something different. So I just want to clarify that the operational control term is when an emergency is happening. Again, makes perfect sense to me if that's what we're saying.
Yes.
Um, so he doesn't have operational controls over the companies. They are acting independently with their chiefs in charge.
Yes, they're two separate five oh one C threes, but I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay, so my question is, if he doesn't have operational control.
He don't.
How does, over the companies, how? Just, he answers, he answers to the board. So the purchase of the fire trucks, that feels like operational control to me. It feels like it came from him and not the chief.
So, so I'll take this. Mark right now is the chief of emergency services with Borough and the Township.
Mm-hmm.
It was based on his recommendation saying, I've talked with fire companies, this is what's needed for our communities to sustain in the future. He brought that to the township. The township authorized the purchase of those two pieces of apparatus for township use. There was no consultation with Borough regarding this.
Right, I understand that, because it's for Upper Morland, for Huntington Valley's fire company.
For Lowerland Township, Huntington Valley Fire Company, yes, yeah.
Okay.
I'm like, seems like you have a lot of different.
I'm done. I just wanted to clarify the operational control part. I appreciate that.
It's for the residents of Lowerland Township.
Right.
Those that rest.
Yeah, okay. It was really the operational control part that I wanted to understand what that actually meant. Because I feel like I heard it differently from, from the borough versus here tonight.
Yeah.
Right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyone? Anyone else from the public?
From George, two, four, one, four, yeah, so, uh, first off, I'd like to ask the board's indulgence. Uh, I may go over the three minutes, but I guess, I think this is critical. First of all, uh, uh, in response to, uh, the posting for Chief Showmaker. Uh, I'm here to tell you that I heard over several meetings. Uh, our commissioner announced that they were considering hiring a consultant. That was over two or three meetings, those were the words. Uh, you can verify it just by looking back at it.
We didn't pull the notes, there was never said that we can find anywhere. If you can show it to me, if you go back and find it, I'd be more than happy to take a look at it. But I appreciate that.
All right, uh. Uh, that, that was the case, I'm, I heard it, so now, uh.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, uh, the other thing is, I wanna, I wanna talk about this latest. Uh, event we had on, on our Little Hamwood of, uh, Dale Road, it'd be, uh, the latest closure. Uh, and you name it, whatever it is, if it's a train accident and the gates are down, an icy Redline Road Hill. You name it, we've got traffic. This last water main break, uh, was pure hell. And it went, we went unnoticed. Uh, we had thousands of cars, commercial vehicles, trucks. And, um, it, it goes on and on. It's the same stuff, different, almost different decade. There's, uh, the management is not there. The signage, the signage was on. The person's property, but Dale and Redline laying flat for three days. Uh, they were never erected. So we had free rein, uh, all the traffic. Uh, that was coming westbound on Redline Road Route sixty-three. Uh, all of that were entering our street. Uh, with that, it's total lawlessness with speeding. Uh, the only thing to check to speed is the bumper to bumper traffic. Uh, violations of the stop signs. Uh, we have a, a group of young boys that play soccer in the street waiting for the school bus. Uh, in the mornings, uh, they were exposed to that. Uh, so for, for all of those reasons, um, there has been. No fix, so I'm requesting the board. Uh, there seem to be, uh, different ideas of where you can erect these barriers. I'm talking about the railroad gate style, whether it can or it can't be in time in Redline. Um, I wanna move beyond that because nobody can, uh, can really put it together for us. I would like one of those barricades at Dale and Redline. Uh, no matter, Upper Morland has them, they have nine of them. Uh, they seem to work pretty well. And for starters, you're taking, what, if you do have them, as many of, if you put them up where you really need them. You need less police to manage it. You need less, uh, auxiliary to manage. Uh, they're, and they're, they're effective. Why wouldn't you consider them? Why wouldn't you use them? Uh.
Are you talking about the automatic arms?
Yes.
Yeah, well, we are actually in the process of looking, but it's government time, so it's gonna take a while.
Uh.
Quite frankly.
Uh, well, regardless, uh, the problem is, it took me thirty-seven minutes to get from my house, right? I'm literally right behind Lori De, thirty-seven minutes from my house to get, make a left-hand turn. On the, well, I said it all, I'm like thirty-seven minutes. You have thirty-five thousand cars going down Philmont every, every day. As Miss McDonald, Mc- McDonald Hugh, putting all the water in a big pipe and a small outlet at the other end, that's the problem. All them cars have nowhere to go, so they go through every side street they can, and everybody's in a rush, so there's nowhere to go. My street was a mess. I have four kids and myself that ride scooters in the street every single day. Cage to. Everybody needs a barricade.
Please don't put down that, we are.
For child safety, we all need it. The problem is, you're asking for, you can't block a road, you, you have to block every side street. Then, li- listen, uh, why is it that you're so resistant to this? Uh, you know, there are other boards that were much more compliant to our plight. Uh, please don't, please don't bring your other, other commissioners that upset them. Uh, first of all.
I wanna tell you that we hear you and we hear your concerns.
Okay.
And, um, there were some changes that were made, and, and just, just hear me out for, for a moment. Um, with regard to signs, some extra barricades and whatnot, but we still hear you that this isn't. Good enough, but it's not working, and that's what we need to hear. If you would come to us and tell us it's not working.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I can defer to, um, Steve Werner, Director of Public Works. He can tell you what's there. There is a new through traffic sign, Steve, it's right on what, Redline?
At Dale.
On Dale, at Redline, and that was erected also.
Okay.
Um, but, but you can refer me here. And the chief and Steve could speak to different things, but at this point in time, we hear you. And we are gonna move forward as Boris, as the manager, said, looking into other options to help you. We tried to put up some signs, additional barricades in all different places. Uh, it's not like we're not doing anything. We're trying incrementally and moving.
Okay, okay.
Continue to do that, because we hear you, sorry.
You, but we, we have very little time between one, uh, shutdown of the roads, uh, due to flooding. And then this, the second occurrence, uh, the water main break. And there was a collapse from, from the first to the second, there was a collapse where there was no, it was a free throw. So you're, I know you're working on it, but you're going backwards. Uh, it shouldn't be. And it shouldn't be going in that direction. Uh. There's, I don't see, all due respect, there is, I don't see a solution for it. There was five hundred eighty-seven cars on High Road trying to get by. St. Amherst was getting out of school, there was nowhere for the buses to go. I'm telling you, there's gridlock everywhere. Everybody's trying to hit every side street, every vein. It's. Okay, so, but this is a three-street, why should? They're all three streets. All right.
I appreciate your time, you're at seven minutes now, so please wrap up.
Okay, uh, I'm done.
Thank you.
Please, uh, keep me in your prayer, thanks.
We will work on this, continue to work on this, thank you for coming through. Anyone else?
Chuck, come on down.
Yeah, I, I just, I just wanna make it common with what I've witnessed for three twenty-three.
Just say your name and dress on that.
Something eight twenty-four seventy-two Dale Road. I wanna thank the chief and the officer over there for listening to us. And taking, you know, our complaints, uh, seriously. But what I witnessed is, I, I, I witnessed a fire marshal drive up in his red truck at Redline and Dale, and he said, I'm shutting it down here. That's it. I don't care how many cars go down Dale Road, and I felt for him that day, because I witnessed two water rescues right from my driveway. And how they occurred was not proper barricades. That's how they occur. People just going around the barricade, a single barricade into the water. And then what we did there was we put our firefighters at risk. And I seen the frustration on that man's face that day, and that, that's what it hit home. Something needs to be done. It needs to be done immediately.
Are you talking about on Dale Road?
Yeah, Dale Road, Joe, yes. No, one, one Redline and, and Philmont. I could see from my driveway.
You're talking about put permanent arms on Philmont S, so you can't get down, so they don't have to do fireworks.
So the Redline and Philmont, yeah.
Yeah, right.
But block horse from going down Philmont, so they don't get into the water area.
Yeah, right, yeah. I mean, there's places where you can actually put these arms that will work. They're, they lock in place, you, a, a, a resident can't get out and lift them up because they lock in place. It's not taxing on our fire department or our police department when these arms go down. Upper Morland has ten, they're getting two more, they'll have twelve in your township, enough for more than, okay? And it's all due to flooding and traffic through streets, that's what it is. And that's all we're asking, we're asking for some consideration here. Where you put them, it's a start. I don't care where you put them, it's a start. But once you see these things are working, you're gonna want more throughout your township, and that's all we're asking you. We're asking for a start. Not talking about a start, put one up, let's see how it works.
Chuck, we've already done.
I understand it.
Absolutely, I think they're a great idea, I support.
Well, let's, let's, let's start moving then, they're nine thousand dollars a piece. How much did we spend on pickleball? Two hundred thousand? We could have all signed, we could have had our arms up already.
Say something to address this. No, okay, good.
That were good.
Okay, good. Uh, anyone else want to address that? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, I'll make.
That's okay.
The arm off, chief. We'll have a problem maybe.
So, you know, there, there's, there's one thing that I, that, that, that comes out now and clear, you know. Prior to me sitting this seat, I just come to the meeting for, in almost every meeting we talk about. And, you know, to just address some of the comments, because it came up with a number of times today. I wouldn't say that the township isn't doing anything. I mean, there's, it, it comes out constantly, I'm kind of doing all this. So can I ask, you know, maybe the, the, the better approach here is to, you know, we've, we, we've looked at. You know, we, we look at the, the variances, we have the sketch plans for the new developments. We have these barricades that we're looking at, you know. Maybe what we should do is, is to look at a more comprehensive plan for stormwater management with some actionable things. That will satisfy the residents, because I, I think everyone, at least I'll speak for myself. We certainly hear all these comments, and, and I absolutely agree. It's, you know, stormwater is an issue within the township. And I think we've done a better job, at least from my seat, of addressing these things. Like, there was a comment, I think, tonight about that, that, you know, these other land developments. I know the one that's off of. Fiveberry Road that we, we said no to because of stormwater issues to the other residents. So it's not that, that nothing was being done, but maybe we can consolidate those things and have more of an active plan to be able to address some of the concern. Because it's not only is it the concern of the residents, it's a concern for emergency services, it's these guys at, at risk. And it puts, you know, the police at risk, and it takes resources away from everything. So maybe we can start thinking about more of a comprehensive plan on targeted things that we can do. And then we work through that plan, then we can communicate it in a way that's transparent to show that we're working. So I know we're doing a lot of things, but maybe we just need to put it together and tie it together in more action.
Steve, we are working on a stormwater plant, management plan.
Well, maybe I can. So there is, um, we actually have a storm management plan filed with DTP that they are in the process of reviewing. Part of that plan is actually a number of detention bases that we're upgrading. Obviously, we're updating the long-term lane base and as we speak, so that was the first contract that we led. Now that we have some funds available to do that work with, part of our issue over the last.
Part of our issue over the last number of years has been just the availability of of the revenue source to do the infrastructure work that we need. Uh, so now that we have that revenue source, we've got a whole list of projects that we are undertaking as these days go by. So, yeah, I think it it may be worth, again, um, you know, taking a couple of minutes at an upcoming meeting where I can do my little slumware talk.
I I think what I'm asking is that we, we sit and we, we come up with, because there's, there are different things, there's the basins that get upgraded, there's the arms that we're looking at, there's a lot of things that are happening. Maybe we just time together a little bit, and maybe some things we can accelerate a little bit faster to help. To help the residents on Dale Road and some other areas to, just to make it better, because it's, it comes up every meeting in different ways, and and maybe we can just consolidate. Yeah, it seems like some, some kind of policy, something that is centralizing all of our thoughts around this, so. Different groups all have to interpret it differently, or interpret it themselves.
I mean, we do, we have a historic problem, because when most of the houses were burnt down or built. There was no thought as to stormwater management, so now we're playing catch.
So, but there, I think there's, maybe there's some targeted things that we can do to focus that, okay, this is a better, better way of doing, maybe we. Do something better over here, because it's gonna have a bigger impact.
And we do, as part of, I mean, Tim could explain it, maybe if he gives a presentation again at another. Meeting, but according to the P P E S and M S four, we have an obligation, we try to educate the public. Put in more native plants, we have these environmental workshops that, the one in May that we're running. Uh, we had a few on Zoom last year and some in-person, um. You know, try to educate the public area, we have different, you know, help in. In our newsletters and and we could keep working towards that mission, it's an idea, thank you, but we're gonna go. Anyone else?
Chris Mato, come on down.
I just wanna make a suggestion, this. Five thirty-five Anne Street. Have we looked at our crease, we talk about water, those uh, even behind my shop, there's so many downed trees. And when that happens, it creates a dam. When it creates a dam, the water now puddles up faster and more, so maybe that's something we can look into to to try to help you guys.
And that's, and that's my point on comprehensive plan, there's things like that, that if you get it all on a board and we say, or, we're gonna do some cleanup here, we're gonna put some arms in, we're gonna do this. And try to attack, rather than just go with one thing at a time and and just kind of picking things all right, would rather receive more of a. Right, but consolidate it.
Right, because there's a lot, I mean, like even on Philmont, I mean, it it's all part of Penny Pack, right, correct? And it's all part of Penny Pack, so we can get them involved, somehow, somebody to help us out, to clean some of this up, because, you know, after. Period of time, trees corrode, you know, they die, they fall down, they create a dam. And I I personally have paid out of my own pocket to clean some of it up behind my shop, because it gets to a point where it comes up so fast. And, you know, I can't afford to constantly do it, so, I don't know that property back there, so. Probably be something to look into to clean up all of our cracks in this area to keep the water flowing. More the water flows, the better chances of it not puddling up so much.
I know public works, Chris, but it's a fraud to get around, but there's only so many, there's public works. Employees that we have, and they have a whole wall list and everything.
Because there was an incident some, one time where we had a deer that got hit by the train, come down, and Pat came and helped Stephen, yeah, to get, to get rid of the deer. So maybe we can look into that too, just a suggestion, so, so.
Build on what he said. Years ago, when we had um the trees trimmed on Philmont. Everything dropped into that waterway, I I don't know if you remember, it was a different board then, trees were trimmed, thank God. They left all the debris, Chris, I called Chris about it, complained, Chris had to go back to Pico. Or, I'm sorry, um, whoever cut the trees, apparently the contract that the township had with whoever cut the trees did not include debris removal. And I kept saying.
Not the township, it was Panda.
But the point is, we just, like this gentleman was just saying, we just let stuff. Bill, and I'm, yes, we have a small public works department and building, all what Dennis was saying, it would be, be really great if we had an environmental committee. Like many surrounding townships that would work on some of those things. And figure out a way to do community service days even, to clean out some of these waterways, rather than hearing from the township. Oh, they're not our property, or it's Panda's property, it is our property, it affects us as residents. So we should take a responsibility to clean our waterways. Um, so I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you Laura for your comment, we'll look into that, things further, thank you, anyone else?
I think the EAC is agreed on, environmental development.
We good, make a motion to adjourn.